Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 8th, 2018, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Lee Bogel will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Lee?
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Hold the roll, please, Gal.
Rhonda Allen. Everwater. Lee Bogel. David Jones. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion. Charlotte P. Pettis Reed. Mike Bott. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Yevakor.
Thank you, Gal. We have no minutes to approve tonight, and we have no items withdrawn or deferred. But we have, if I could have a motion to suspend the rules, we have three final plats that we delayed at our last nine o'clock meeting, and they're ready to be discussed tonight. So if I could have a motion to suspend the rules, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you. These are the three items that we discussed. I think they're all for final plats, and we discussed them at our nine o'clock meeting on the 24th, I believe. And with your approval, we'll bring those back up and have a discussion on those tonight. Submitted for final plat approval, the item number is 18-2108, Pembroke Farms, Section One, 35 lots on 28.7 acres, zoned RM, located on Stewart Creek Road. Salem Creek Partnership is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Phillips. Thank you, and good evening, planning commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. As was stated, this is the first of three plats that were deferred at the, I believe it was September 24th, meeting. The big reason these were deferred had to do with the new requirements from the U.S. Postal Service regarding centralized delivery. This being the first section of this subdivision, and no other sections before it, is required to go with the centralized delivery. Now, the issue that they're running into, of course, is when this plat was originally submitted and when the development was originally designed, those regulations weren't in place. So, infrastructure has been built, roads are in, in different things, and so now they're kind of having to go back and look at the development, try to figure out where to put the central development, central kiosk in. The three that we're looking at, two of them are required to go with the central delivery. That would be this one in the Creeks Bend plat. The Long Creek one actually did receive a waiver. You can see on the plat on your iPads, and I believe it's on the big screen as well, the easement that they're showing is a 10 by 10 postal easement, and it's on Lot 28. Originally, when this was shown, and we didn't particularly care for the location, it was right in the middle of that drainage easement, right to the north of that. They have shifted that out of the easement. Being that this is in the cul-de-sac, kind of what their thought process, excuse me, is is that someone would come down Pembroke Farms Drive, they'd go up, what was that, Cooper City Drive, and then kind of turn around the cul-de-sac and come back, park real quick, get their mail, and then be on their way. From staff's standpoint, after talking with the applicant's design engineer about this, we're still in the process of getting our regulations together. I passed that out prior to the meeting for your, just want to talk more about that during our day meeting, but this gives you an idea kind of where we're looking to go. Really can't hold them to these standards as of yet, but based on the fact that they already have infrastructure in place, this would be a hardship for them to have to start tearing out things, the drainage is in place, everything like that. So, the Postal Service has approved this location that is being shown on this plat. We're okay with it. We understand this is going to be kind of a learning process as we go. You know, some of these subdivisions are going to be kind of caught in limbo that were designed prior to the regulations taking effect, and then, you know, now coming in and having to kind of retrofit their subdivisions. But as time goes on, we'll see less and less of that, and more of them will be able to go ahead and design according to the standards that we'll end up adopting. So with that, that was the big issue on this plat. So we'd recommend approval based on the location of what they're showing, but if there's questions, we'd be more than happy to talk about them now.
With the postal system requirement, is it going to just mandate us to automatically, everybody's got to be in HOA, everything that comes in?
Pretty much. And you can see, based on the regulations that we're proposing, what we're proposing is that these kiosks would be on an individual lot. In some subdivisions, if they have common area, like in planned developments especially, if there's common area, they can incorporate the kiosk into the common area, it won't be as big of an issue. That would have to be maintained by an HOA anyway. But I think you're correct by saying that with the fact that each one of these is going to have to be maintained by somebody, the county's not going to do it, it's going to have to be incumbent upon the homeowners. So the HOA is going to have to be established for each development regardless of the size going forward.
Doug, on this particular, is this mic on? Okay. Okay. No, it is, I don't get the normal echo that must, new and improved. On Lot 28, this 10 by 10 easement, what about parking? Are they parking in the street?
It would just be, for this one, it'd just be on the side of the road.
Okay. All right. Do we have to have like a designated, painted chevrons on the road?
No, I don't think we need anything like that. Now, something that they are going to have to do is design it consistent with ADA standards, the Americans with Disabilities Act. Regardless of what it shows on the plat, they will have to come back and demonstrate that it can meet ADA requirements. And of course, they'll have to build up to the U.S. Postal Service's requirements as well. So those are standard, regardless of what we do here, they'll be required to do that.
Doug, didn't you say this would only service the 32 lots that are here, and that another phase of this would have its own, possibly?
Possibly. That'll be up to them. The developer will have to get with the U.S. Postal Service about that. Now, they did say, depending on the size of the development, that there could be multiple kiosks in a single subdivision. So, you know, I think about subdivisions like South Haven, for instance, you know, 500-plus lots, you know, it's not reasonable to think you're going to have one central area there for that, so there's the ability to have to multiple, have multiple locations.
Doug, did they give you any sort of imagery of, is it going to be sheltered? Is it going to be lit? Is it going to be landscaped? Did they give you any design information at all about it? Because that was one of the pieces that I wanted to see, was what is their plan for what it's going to look like?
Yeah, they have not provided anything to us for that. We're, even in the regulations that we're proposing, we're not mandating anything like that. We're really going to leave it up to the developer on how they want to do that, at least as they're currently written. Now, if you want to see, you know, those type of improvements, that's certainly something we can look into. But as of right now, we haven't asked for anything like that. As long as it meets the, again, ADA requirements and the U.S. Postal Service's design requirements, then we would, we would allow it.
Yeah, I just want to know that it's a well-thought-out design, and that's the reason that I ask, you know, have they given us anything to look at?
Could you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
I said, I just want to make sure that it was a well-thought-out design, and I can't tell that from a shaded box.
We'll still want them to submit us something to look at. You know, in the future, when we look at these, you know, we anticipate either looking at it with a site plan, and you'll see in the regulations either a site plan if it were like a dedicated amenity area, or if they just want to do like a little bulb out with the parking area, the parking spots, like parallel parking type spots, we would allow that at the construction drawings phase, which would be more of a staff level, either one really would be more of a staff level. But we would like to see that, just to make sure, for, you know, same concerns that you have. Now, as far as the landscaping and all of that, again, there's no, there's nothing I could hold them to at this point. So, we would just have to see what they're proposing and maybe make some suggestions that we think might improve the design.
Well, I think as we're drafting our policies, we need to include whether it's sheltered, the lighting especially, because that's going to impact neighbors, you know, the flow-through, you know, the, how it's going to, the drives are going to go, and landscape, the buffer. I mean, it's not uncommon for us to put buffers around things that are going to impact neighbors, and so those are things I think we need to work into our policy.
Okay, and that's fine. And like I said, we'll talk more about these regulations at the day meeting, but this will at least get the discussion going, kind of where we're going, and we'll just kind of see where, where the discussion goes.
Doug, if it, if it is lighted, somebody's got to pay the light bill.
Mm-hmm. And that would be up to the HOA at that point. I mean, you're absolutely right. If there's going to be lighting or...
That'd be metered.
Mm-hmm. Right. I mean, those are all, I mean, you're absolutely right. But, but again, that's why we're thinking that this is going to have to be done through an HOA, because who else is going to be able to pay the bill? It's not fair for the lot owner of Lot 28 to have to foot the bill for electric, if there's landscaping, watering, maintaining. It's not fair to make one property owner handle all that for the entire subdivision. So that's why we think it's only appropriate to do an HOA for something like this. And reviewing the regulations that we've seen, like I said, most of the ones I've looked at have been North Carolina, Georgia, and those areas, and that's, I've seen that requirement on several of them, is that a HOA is responsible for, for taking care of those and maintaining them.
Doug, correct me, but did I hear you say the only change to this is that they moved it out of the drainage ditch?
Correct. They moved it just a touch to the south on Lot 28. That's correct.
And that the post office made approval?
That's correct. We have an email chain that's, sorry.
Approved.
Basically, what they says, they approved the location, is what they're doing. It's not going to be, as I've seen it so far, we're not going to have like a form from them that says, "We approve this location, we don't." I'm going to require some sort of documentation, be it, it could be that, it could be an email chain, which is what I've been getting so far. The developers, design engineers have been sending me copies of the things that they send to the USPS, and then their response to that about approving or not approving locations and things. So, in my mind, that, that works. So I've just been printing those things out and putting them in the file for documentation, and I don't intend on signing any final plats until we know for certain that that's taken care of. And that's something else you'll see in here, that we want these, these kiosks up and running before, you know, basically before the building permits or first CFO or something like that, because we don't want to see a situation where people start moving into these neighborhoods and can't get mail because the kiosks aren't there. So that's, that's something else that we're going to, that's, that's, that we've included in these regulations that we're proposing.
Doug, because we're, these three are our first guinea pigs, unfortunately, would it be appropriate to limit this particular kiosk to this particular design that we're approving? I know you said that it potentially could be for more lots, you know, we just weren't sure at this point, but I guess part of what I'm thinking is, you know, can I give them some grace on this one, knowing they're in a bind on this particular design, if they're willing to limit it to this phase? And that way they can have a better, more thought-out plan in Phase Two, unless they want to take the time to think it out now and go ahead and plan for that to be a larger kiosk.
Mm-hmm. So, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. You, you're asking if you can subject the approval, condition the approval, if you will, to this kiosk only servicing this particular section? So when Section Two comes in, they would have another kiosk? Is that kind of what...
Or if they decide to improve the plan on this one, when they come in, they could say, "We built this out to service Area Two because," I'm, I'm just saying, "We don't have a thought-out plan right now, we don't have regulations right now, I'm trying to figure out a way to give them a yes, but to limit the downside of that yes." So that's why I'm asking.
I mean, I think you could. The only issue that I would have with it, and a little bit of uncomfort that I would have with it, is the fact that some of this is outside of our control. If the USPS comes back in Phase Two and say, "Well, no, we don't want another kiosk over here, we only want this one," that kind of binds our hands, because we have no control over what the post office folks do. So, that'd be, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that this is only going to be the one for this, and we have representatives from SEC here that might be able to answer that question, but I would be hesitant to say this can only serve this particular, this kiosk can only serve this particular section, and without something from the USPS saying that, yeah, in future sections, we're going to require more kiosks, we just, we just don't know that at this point.
Section Two has 50 lots.
Yeah, Section Two has 50 lots, so that's, that's a lot more boxes. So, I would think, just looking at this, because this one's about 32, that you would probably have another kiosk. Again, kind of go back to what you were saying, you know, once you start going further back into the development, you know, is it fair to make a person who lives in the back development have to drive all the way to the front, or walk, or whatever, to, to get their mail? And, you know, I don't, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Quite frankly, this whole situation doesn't make a lot of sense to me, the way it came about, so.
Motion and a second to approve 18-2108 for Pembroke Farms, Section One. Other questions? Anybody want to ask SEC any questions while they're here? I think one of the reasons we, we delayed this was because they weren't there, and maybe we wanted some questions for them. Anybody want them up here?
Yes.
Yes. SEC.
My name is Jeremy Moody. I represent SEC. What, what questions can I answer for you?
For future phases, we plan on doing either a parking area or a covered kiosk.
In this case, this is already developed condition, so there was no plan upfront to actually put a mail kiosk in. We didn't know the mail kiosks were necessary until we got to the final plat stage, so there was no room to put it in this area. But we've spoken to a few developers, we've spoken to a few of our clients, and we feel that the best design approach on these mail kiosks is to do a single mail kiosk for each face, depending on how big each face is. That way it limits the amount of traffic at each one, because you don't want 500 houses going to one meat, mail kiosk, that's a lot of traffic. So, on future phases, we do plan on doing multiple kiosks. Yes? Do I? Currently, we don't know what the design intent or the design is of the mail kiosk in this area. We're just showing an easement, showing the possibility, we're showing the area that the mail kiosk will be placed in. We need to get with USPS in order to, to figure out what their design requirements are going to be. Yeah.
Yeah, based on what we've heard, we don't think they have any other than you have to have one. And so that's part of the reason that we're trying to figure that piece of it out. In this particular plat, I remember that we talked about, you've got Pembroke Drive, Pembroke Farm Drive, has a cul-de-sac at the end of it that's for future use. And so, I, I guess one of my questions was, did you explore at all the possibility of putting it there so that you could then have one for one and two, or were you just trying to get this...
Yeah, our, our clients were already delayed on this final plat, so we were just trying to get this one in as quickly as possible. They're, they're ready to build, so...
I know, I know you're in a tough spot. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? We have a motion and a second to approve Pembroke Farms, Section One, final plat. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 18-2110, Creeks Bend Subdivision, Section Two, Phase One, 37 lots on 18.76 acres, zoned RM, located off Old Lebanon Road. John T. Holloway is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I won't go into the discussion that I did the, for the last one, it's because this is pretty much the same type situation. You can see that the proposed kiosk on this particular subdivision is another 10 by 10 USPS easement on Lot 287, which is right there on the corner of Crooked, Crooked Creek and Mirage Street. So, you can kind of see it, they're tucked in the corner between 286 and 287. Again, this is a similar situation that we just discussed. So, again, I'll be happy to answer any questions beyond that. This, this plat's in good order.
Okay, Doug, but that road's not the cul-de-sac with the turnaround for the traffic flow and all that? That's just a, that's just a through street?
Correct.
So have you talked about traffic or parking, or any of that on this one?
There wasn't any further discussion on that. This isn't one of the, I don't know if this is necessarily one of the collector streets in the subdivision, since it's just going to be for this section, and this is the back of the subdivision, at least the back part. I mean, there'll be people, you didn't want to put it necessarily on Crooked Creek, because that's got access back to Old Lebanon Road, so that's really one of the more, the main entrances coming in and out. So, after looking at this, you know, we were more, we were more comfortable with the location there than, than anywhere else.
The post office approves it?
Yes, they, they approved this one as well. Yes.
Doug, I guess with this one right here, the turnaround spot's going to be, what, Toll House Place?
It could, yes. And now Mirage Street does go through, you know, I'm not familiar with, about looking at a map, just with all of the road network, but, I mean, for now, that could be, eventually that will, Lot, Lot 271 had to be platted because it was under five acres, even though it's the future development, but there'll be a turnaround, there'll be a cul-de-sac at that spot, yes.
Okay.
And Doug, you looked at this with them, and you agree that out of all the lots, this was the best solution?
Well, this is what they presented, and looking at it, I mean, I don't think this is any better or worse than anywhere else that you could put it. Lot 287, you can tell is a little bit of a larger lot. This probably has less impact on that particular lot than it would on some of the other lots. When you go down Crooked Creek, they're more standard size. This one, being a corner lot, is a little bit larger, so there's a little bit more room for furniture there in the front.
I feel a little better that the Mirage Street across that intersection is a cul-de-sac, so that should be a short leg.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor of a motion to approve 18-2110, Creeks Bend Subdivision, Section Two, Phase One, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 18-2111, Long Creek Subdivision, Section Six, 33 lots on 38.79 acres, zoned RM, located on Center Rock Drive, Fox Development Incorporated is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is the third of the three plats deferred from the last planning commission meeting. This particular section did receive a waiver from the USPS for centralized delivery, so they will continue to utilize curbside service as the rest of the subdivision has, and we do have documentation of that, so with that, we'd recommend approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve 18-2111, Long Creek Subdivision, Section Six. Any other discussion?
Doug, do you know why this particular application got approval and the others didn't?
From our discussions with the applicant's design engineer, it's because this is the last section of that subdivision. Those other two that we looked at, Pembroke, I wasn't so much surprised with Pembroke Farms, because that's just getting off the ground as far as lots being recorded. Creeks Bend is still got quite a few lots left, so from what we're being told, their policy is going to be, if it's pretty much the end of the subdivision, no further sections, they'll still grant waivers, but anything else, they're going to ask for centralized delivery.
If not, all those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Now we're getting back to our regularly scheduled agenda. Item 6A, these two items are rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. 6A1, 18-018, Scott and Loretta Johnson, DBA Mobile Living. Location is 10963 Highway 99. Commission District is eight. The county commissioner is Pettis Reed. Size of the site is approximately two, and 2.75 acres. Tax map is 146. The existing zoning is RM, residential, medium density. Proposed zoning is CG, commercial general.
Doug? Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The applicant, as you stated, is requesting to rezone this property to commercial general in order to operate an aftermarket vehicle upfitting company. There's materials that the applicant has provided, I included those with your agenda packets, you'll find those all on your iPad. The existing mobile home on the property is vacant and will be removed. Materials from the applicant indicate they cater primarily to trucks, vans, Jeeps, et cetera. They're not limited to those, but primarily those are their clientele. They're a retail store, they also perform minor installation of accessories. This isn't like a body shop or anything like that, it's really installation of, again, aftermarket-type parts. They sell items, as you can see, such as camper shells, safety lighting, racks, et cetera. Further conversations with the applicant indicate that in the future, they may wish to sell ATVs, all-terrain vehicles, or similar-type vehicles. That's the reason why we recommended they go with a commercial general zoning district, commercial services, commercial neighborhood would not allow for the vehicle sales, but commercial general does. The applicant has also submitted a concept plan, and again, the submitted materials in your agenda packets for your reference. Access will be along Highway 99. Their concept plan does show two access points, one where the existing driveway is located, the other future access to the west. Of course, if this were to be approved, an engineered site plan would have to be submitted to our office for our review, and we would revisit access at that point. Highway 99 is a state road, so T.D.O. approval would be required for either modification of the existing drive or a new drive on the property. Properties of their zone, commercial general, are required to provide a Type II buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. This site does back up to Concord Creek, so there is a 60-foot stream buffer that would be required to be maintained on the creek. They can use those existing plantings, they would just have to show that on the site plan. We may have to supplement the plantings, it just depends on what they, what they come back with. Any parking maneuvering areas would also have to meet our standards, consistent with Section 1104, and also to meet the performance standards that we have in the zoning ordinance. The area is not identified as being within a 100-year flood zone, identified by FEMA, but it appears that the flood study was discontinued prior to it getting to this area, and again, this does back up to Concord Creek, and we do anticipate that there may be some possible flood or drainage issues with this tract. The applicant has been made aware of that, as well as their design engineer, so they would have to work closely with them and with staff in order to ensure that a good stormwater maintenance, or management system, excuse me, would be designed to provide quality and quantity for any drainage on the property. I don't recall receiving any phone calls about this request. This is, appears, at least staff's concern, does appear to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. The applicants are present, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at That is a wedding venue, like an event venue right across the street. It's been there for several years. It was approved really before we came under the new retreat regulations we have now, so it's, it's an approved use, more grandfathered under today's standards, but that's what it's used for.
Doug, if this were to be approved and built in four, five years down the road, owners decided to sell, or that business was not successful, what other type of commercial enterprises could go in there?
A fairly wide variety of commercial uses. Again, you could have car sales, vehicle, motor vehicle sales, car repair, retail, pretty much any type of retail, general retail sales, construction sales and service offices like contractors. Commercial general of the three commercial zones that we have is the most permissive of the three, so it would, there would be a, a number of uses that they could, they could do there.
They would not have to come back for any type of approval?
Only those that are allowed by right. There are some that are still allowed by conditional, or I'm sorry, special exception, like many warehouses, for example. That would still be a conditional, well, a special exception under the code, and would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeal. So there are some uses that are still identified as special exceptions, even in the, today's code. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman? The pictures that we're showing there, and I think the question was asked, was across the street from it, that's Annalee Acres. Some of you may have been out there for Chamber of Commerce events or whatever, weddings and things. The picture that was shown there is quite old. It's showing the church that was once there. That has been totally remodeled. It's, it's a quite large facility now, that there are events held there, and, so that's, that's what's across the street there. In fact, they are the individuals that own the property that you're seeing here this evening. evening. Uh, they, they own both these properties. I am the commissioner, uh, of that area out there and where this is located. I too have not received, uh, any calls myself, uh, concerning this, uh, this property. Uh, other than from the individuals who are wanting to, uh, use the property for their business as well as the individual who is trying to sell it, so that's who I have heard from.
Thank you, Pettis. If you, if you look on the, uh, screen now, Mike's got the, um, a more recent aerial photo of the, of the property. You can, right, March of 2017, so you can see that they've, they, as you said, that they've done quite a bit of expansion out there.
Doug, is this the lowest level of zoning that would permit this use?
With the vehicle sales, it is, yes. If they didn't want vehicle sales, uh, or the ability to do that in the future, I probably would have recommended Commercial Services, but with the vehicle sales, it would be.
I just want, excuse me, I just want to comment to staff that that was a good catch on the flooding situation. I have seen that in the past, and I'm sure Pettis has also. That water has been known to get almost up to the floor of that trailer, uh, and I think that, uh, a proper development with the, the minimum floor elevations that you have in here, uh, and replacing the trailer with a newer structure would certainly be an improvement to that property.
Thank you. We have a good crack engineering staff that catches these things.
Other questions for staff? Ready for a public hearing? This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 18- A018 Scott and Loretta Johnson, DBA Mobile Living. Is the applicant available? Is the applicant here? Would you please come forward? If you would state your name, uh, for the record, please.
Loretta Johnson.
Okay. Just a, uh, just a brief summary of what you guys have in mind.
Thank you. Thanks for having up here. Thanks, Doug. Um, so our plan, um, is to establish a retail, um, truck accessory store. We have a, a successful one in Concord, California. Uh, we've been established for 55 years. Um, of course, I haven't owned it that long. Thank you, though. Um, 21 years I've owned it, and, um, so it was time for us to move our family out here for a better life in Tennessee, so we looked to move out here, and, uh, here we are, and, uh, we want to get set up out here in the country. Um, so if you have any questions for our business?
Any questions?
You did mention automotive sales. Um, one of the things we were thinking about doing is ATV. I don't think that really goes into the full spectrum of an auto dealership. Um, it kind of overlaps with the work that we offer, um, 'cause we outfit a lot of vehicles for outdoorsmen, people that want to go and explore and do things, you know, with their family and stuff like that. And we, we found that ATVs out here obviously fit that category, so, you know, that's kind of where we're going with that, but, um, there's definitely room to grow. Yes, sir.
Uh, is your sale is gonna be mostly new equipment, not used?
Yes. Yeah, right, yes. Right now, we have a 6,000 square foot building in, uh, the heart of the East Bay, and we have four work bays, um, two less. We have 10 employees. Um, here, obviously, we're kind of shrinking things down a little bit, uh, due to, um, the size of the location and everything, but we found that it will meet the needs that we have. With one, um, you know, with one entrance right now, we're looking at, uh, what TDOT's gonna require to have another entrance in the future, or another, uh, driveway, so that we can kind of loop it on and offer two entrances. Um, but we've discussed with, um, with everyone, with engineers and with the flood issue, we take that, um, serious, so we plan on filling and, uh, that requirement to actually lift it up, um, the ground around it and, and, uh, build the, the correct runoff that we need for the neighbors and all that.
You had asked about the parts. They're, they're all new parts that we order. We're a Lear dealer right now. We've got approval. Um, are you all, um, familiar with Lear camper shells? They're the largest camper shell manufacturer in the nation. We've got the approval to sell their product in a certain area, so we order, a customer comes in with their vehicle, their truck, their van, they look through catalogs, they look around our showroom, and then we order parts for them. They're all new parts, and then we schedule an appointment once the parts arrive to install, and we pull everything inside our work base to do the installation.
I want to, like to clarify a little bit the question of what type of vehicles that are possibly gonna be sold there at some point. Are we talking trucks and Jeeps, or are we talking the little four-wheeler off-road vehicles, or RVs, or what are we talking about here?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Um, if you look back in our history, if they, if you ever go on the internet or the website or anything like that, you'll find that it kind of overlaps because we had a long history of working on, uh, travel trailers, camper shells, and all that kind, or, uh, RVs and stuff. Um, in the last 21 years that I've owned it, we've gone away from that because, um, of our location size, we couldn't house all the big 32-foot, whoops, sorry, uh, RVs and trailers and stuff like that. So mainly, we concentrate on trucks, vans, SUVs, um, yeah, smaller vehicles, definitely. The largest things we get are sometimes we get, um, 'cause we, we do work with municipalities also, um, so we will seek out like any kind of work that we can get with electric companies, um, and, uh, other companies that use, uh, emergency vehicles and stuff like that because we do specialize in elect, uh, lighting for the vehicles, boxes, racks, and all the necessities for, uh, people to use them out in the, in the field. So that's just an overlap of kind of what we do, but, um, I mean, the biggest thing that we ever bring in nowadays would be like a, a big, uh, boom truck or something, you know, nothing too extreme.
But these vehicles you're describing are vehicles that you modify and return back to a customer?
Correct.
If you are proposing to sell vehicles here, something with wheels on them at some time in the future, what would those wheels?
ATVs.
What would those look like that you would be storing on the lot?
ATVs.
And can you describe what an ATV exactly is, size?
A small recreational off-road vehicle, um, that doesn't have over a 3,200 G, G V W. I mean, something very small.
So these are like the little Polaris's?
Yes.
And that sort of thing?
Yes.
These aren't Jeeps or trucks or that sort of thing that you would?
No.
Have new on the lots available for sale?
Right. It would be like a Polaris. You hit it right on the spot, right?
And are those stored outdoors or indoors?
Um, well, we would have a showroom because, uh, half of our building is designed to be a showroom, so we would have those on the showroom, and then depending on the inventory that we carried, there would have to be some brought outside at some point and then brought back in, but they would have, they would be inside the majority of the time. Did anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
I believe you've talked to some of the acres out there already.
Yes, we have. Um, from the people that we've talked to, everyone's been welcoming and, and pretty open to the idea. We haven't had anyone that's opposed to us, um, and the, the area, I mean, we've reached out to as many people as we can, so definitely.
So none of the aftermarket parts would include, uh, exhaust, custom exhaust systems that would interfere with the wedding ceremony across the street at Annalee?
No, in fact, they're our, our, our best customer, actually. They wanted us to move in there. They've been encouraging all along. Um, Darrell's, uh, you know, Darrell even said, hey, I'll come down tonight, you know, to stand there and, you know, support you guys if you, um, so I think that, uh, we're in agreement. I mean, and we're, we're nine to five. We're not late night wrenching on stuff and making a bunch of noise with all the neighbors and stuff like that. Where, I mean, we're in a shop. It's all, it's very clean, and, um, I notice, I mean, driving around the countryside, there's people, and they're setting up their shops everywhere, and, and they're in their garages and stuff like that, and one of the things that I think that we offer and something we're bringing, uh, to the table is the fact that, um, we run a, a tight ship. We run something that is professional, um, and I've already, I've, I've got high expectations of what our business is gonna do out here and how we're gonna run it and how it's gonna basically complement the area that we're moving into, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 18- A018 for Scott and Loretta Johnson. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6A2 18- A019 Dan Bobo for Old South Properties Incorporated. Location Shelbyville Highway. Commission District is 6. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 141 acres. Approximately 115 of those will be rezoned. Tax map is 149. Existing zoning is residential medium density, RM. Proposed zoning is a PUD, Planned Unit Development. I believe the name of this proposed, uh, PUD is Woodruff Cove.
Yes, sir. Doug? Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, the applicant's proposing, as was stated, to rezone this property to Planned Unit Development, PUD, for a single-family residential development. Uh, the entirety of parcel 1.07 is included with this request as, along with portions of parcels 1.00 and 1.04. A very, very small portion of the Crossway Baptist Church is actually being proposed. You can see that on the map that Mike has up there. It's really just to square the lots up a little bit, and they do have permission to make application from the church for that. They will consist of 200 homes, uh, 200 lots, which is about 1.74 units per acre, and will have a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet with a typical lot size of 7,500 square feet. House sizes will be a minimum of 1,300 square feet. Sidewalks will be on one side of the street, and this development will utilize centralized mail delivery and also streetlights. Uh, homes will be vinyl sided with masonry or stone bases from the base to the bottom of the windows, and there's a pattern book that's been included on your iPads as a separate attachment, so, uh, there'll be additional information about the developments there. Uh, the concept plan does show one access point to Shelbyville Pike and two proposed access points to the Davenport Station subdivision to the north, as well as a couple of other access points to the south for potential future connection to Crescent Lane. Uh, the applicant has submitted traffic study. Uh, since Shelbyville Pike is a state and federal highway, TDOT approval will be required for the access drives. We did have some concerns and, and do have some concerns about the timing of the proposed connections to the north with the Davenport Station subdivision. As part of the approval for Davenport Station, the traffic signal is to be installed at the intersection of Shelbyville Pike and Rucker Road. Uh, this signal will provide an opportunity for easier northbound movements from both Davenport Station and Woodruff Cove. Our biggest concern had to do with the number of people turning to the south out of this proposed develop, proposed development and making a U-turn at the next meeting opening if those connections are not made. However, we have seen construction drawings already for one of the connections in Davenport Station. We don't think that's going to be an issue after really looking into this, uh, a little bit more. Uh, screening and buffering is not required for single-family residential subdivisions that adjoin each other, so there is no, uh, buffering being proposed in this development. Uh, each lot will have a landscape package, and there is over 50% open space in this development. Uh, we have asked for more detailed calculations of the open space, which they have provided on the amended pattern book that you have. Uh, performance standards are also, uh, not applicable for this, being that this is a single-family development. Overall, staff is comfortable with the design. We know there'll probably be some concerns and some questions regarding the traffic and the movements in that area, so we're prepared to, to help answer those questions. Uh, with that, we'll be happy to answer your other questions as well. I would point out again that the PUD pattern book is within your, uh, iPads for you to, to take a look at. We'll also have it on the big screen. Uh, I know that there are representatives here of the applicant and also their, uh, design engineer, so, uh, with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question. Mike, on the three detention ponds, are they gonna, are they gonna be the kind that they're gonna continue to keep water, or are they just gonna detain water and then the water's gonna evaporate and it's mostly gonna be grass most of the time? What's the plan?
Right. We haven't seen the actual design of these, uh, stormwater management areas, so typically, what, like Doug mentioned, we have to, uh, manage water quality and quantity. So the quality part, uh, a lot of times they'll do an extended detention where the water will sit and let the, the solid, the sediment drop out, um, but we, to answer your question, we don't know what they're proposing right now, so it, it could be combination of, uh, some kind of treatment train, uh, some kind of water quality unit, uh, or a permanent wet pond, so there's, there's all kinds of options.
I guess the reason that I ask is because, um, and, and I'm, I'm having an argument in my head, so if I stumble a little bit, that's why. Uh, on the one hand, I like that, that open space is broken up and more people get to enjoy it than, you know, just putting it at one part of the subdivision. Um, my initial thought when I saw this was twofold. My first thought was, wow, if these people have a pond in their backyard, how cool is that gonna be? And then the second thought was, as a mom, oh my God, they're gonna have a pond in their backyard. So that's the reason that I ask, what, you know, from a safety standpoint, from, um, you know, just, just everything that that could entail, just makes me wonder, what's that gonna be?
Right. Now, if, if they do, um, pursue a, a permanent wet pond, uh, we follow the Metro Stormwater Management Manual that, uh, essentially says that they have to have a, a flatter slope, the bank, so it's, if someone were to stumble in there, it wouldn't be, you know, a, a steep drop-off. You, you know, it would gradually flow into the, the area to the, the permanent pool.
Would there be a limit on how deep it could be?
Um, typically, yes, there is a limit. Um, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I'd have to get the, the manual out, but I, I'm thinking it's several feet. Um, but, you know, as a, as a wet pond, there, there are three options in the wet pond. There's a full wet pond, there's a, um, micro pool, and a kind of one in between, so I mean, there's, there's, like, there's multiple options, but, and we haven't seen the construction plans yet.
Want to hear from the developer?
Doug, can you just clarify, um, you're not concerned now about the timing of the traffic light at Da, at Davenport Station, uh, you said after you dug into it? Is that right?
Not, not as much as I was. When we first looked at this, um, we were in the process also of, of looking at the construction drawings for a Davenport Station, so we anticipate that by the time this is to that stage, that one of those connections will already be ready and waiting, um, so it, it's not as, as much of a concern as it was originally.
Go ahead.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
The conversation that you and I had before the planning commission tonight was, when they come out, when, when they come out of, uh, Woodruff Cove to turn right going toward Shelbyville or going toward the school, um, we talked about the first crossover there maybe having a deceleration lane to cut back, but you're under the impression that that would just invite a danger?
Yes, sir. It, because of the limited distance, it's roughly 500 feet from their, um, main entrance into the subdivision to that crossover. We felt that it wouldn't be sufficient time, uh, or length to allow somebody to cross over two lanes, get in an E turn lane, and then make a, uh, a, essentially a U-turn in, in that crossover and then head back north. So we didn't want to make that a stipulation to encourage people to do that, so we're, we've, um, I, I guess you could say pulled the trigger on- So we're, we've, I guess you could say, pulled the trigger on the traffic signal the north. We've asked the developer to establish a cost estimate for the traffic signal at Rucker and to post a surety for that before we release any more lots in Section 2. And then, like Doug said, the, when Davenport Station was approved, the fourth section was supposed to make a connection to Rucker Lane, and that's kind of where we're heading, that they are at that fourth section now, and so this next section will make a connection to this Rucker and 231 intersection. So we're, you know, pulling the trigger on that traffic signal.
This certainly pulls the trigger, right?
Yes, sir. And the traffic study indicated that if these developments weren't in the works now, a traffic signal would be warranted now. So it's, the level of traffic on 231 and the surrounding lots and traffic patterns that use this area, it's already warranted, so it's something that needs to be done. But there's several hurdles we'll have to go through, being a TDOT road, you know, it'll have to get their blessing, and so there's a long process that's involved with that.
The possibility there, 400-plus houses at Davenport Station, 200-plus houses here, you double that, everybody's got a car, you're looking at 1,300 cars trying to make it through that red light in the morning.
Right, yes, sir. And that's, you know, we can't prevent people from trying to make that U-turn, you know, head south and then make a hairpin, go north, but we didn't want to encourage people to try to make that.
A lot of them will probably be going to the school.
Yes. Now, if, that would probably be a workable pattern to, you know, give them enough distance to go down to the school and then come back. See if I can show you where the school. Bit farther down, right in this area, is the school. So go, you know, they could head south, drop the kids off, and then turn around, come back north, it wouldn't be an issue. But we thought that just that short distance of 500 feet, crossing over two lanes and then having to make a hairpin turn against a lot of oncoming traffic, that's something we didn't want to encourage.
Is there a regulation TDOT has between, how many feet there has to be between?
Yes, sir. I believe, I don't hold it to it, but I'm, and don't look at the crossovers near the schools, because those don't follow that pattern. I believe it's 800 to 1,000 feet between crossovers. And they are, they are pretty protective of the existing driveways and people using those crossovers now, so you would have to get a property owner's approval to give, even if it was just one driveway, to give up their crossover median cut. So they're pretty protective on moving those.
Doug, this is probably an unfair question, just given the limited amount of time we've had to learn about this issue, but I'm seeing 200 lots and I'm seeing one male kiosk.
In this particular development, they actually have a designated area, and it's pretty much a centralized area for mail pickup. Now, one of the comments that I had after looking at the revisions, and if you could zoom in on that area, Mike, thank you. One of the questions that I had about that was, well, first of all, I said, I don't think, I don't like the fact that they're just pulling in and have to back out, back out onto the road. I think, I don't necessarily think that, you know, if this were to change, I don't necessarily think that necessitates bringing it back for reapproval or anything, but there needs to be more done with that. And, you know, I think about it the same way I think about like this, this is more of like a, what I call a clustered development, in a sense. You know, the lots are smaller, a lot more open space around it. This is similar to what you'd see like for an apartment complex, where you may have 200 or 300 units and you have one centralized area. I would expect a little bit more here than just the boxes there. Expect roof, you know, a nicer design, I would expect to see here. So, yes, they only have the one, but there's adequate room there to accommodate all of them in this area, being it's a larger area. And I would anticipate a little different design than what we're seeing on this, as far as how the traffic's going to move in and out.
Well, you've got that area between Lot 141 and 142, that just made me wonder if that wouldn't be a good location for a second one, but...
And that could be something that, I mean, yeah, I see what you're talking about, next to the detention pond there. I mean, that might be an option as well. You know, now, that's something, you know, even prior to preliminary plan approval, that they would want to talk with the USPS about, and if they wanted to show a couple of different locations for that, again, I don't really think that necessitates bringing it back through for reapproval. That would be a minor amendment deviation in my, in my mind, and we could do that administratively. But I think what you're saying there is well taken.
Well, because I'm just thinking, you know, just even if we go with a minimum of, you know, 100 boxes per kiosk or something, I mean, when you start thinking about what 200 boxes in a kiosk are going to look like, that's going to be a pretty massive kiosk. So, anyway. I just made me think, you've got an opportunity there, because that's a lot they can't use anyway. So...
Yes, and I've seen, right, and, you know, the post office has basically, pretty much said, you know, we're not going to dictate to the localities how you do it, just, it has to be done. So, you know, we're open to other options as far as that goes. I mean, I think your idea has a lot of merit to it. You know, that way, someone, again, who lives in the very back of the development, you know, could be a nice, you know, stroll down the neighborhood to go get their mail, but if it's rainy and yucky and it's a Saturday, they could just be lazy and just wait to get the mail some other time. But I think your idea has a lot of merit. I think it's worth looking into.
And then along those lines, Doug, did we ever resolve, and I don't know that we did, emergency services and how they're going to identify these homes?
When we were first, when we first met with the postal service folks about this, that was one of the questions we asked, is, you know, a lot of the, it's, the purpose of the mailbox isn't necessarily just for the mail. I mean, that's its primary purpose, but a lot of people put their addresses on their mailbox, so when emergency services or even delivery services are coming to drop off the pizza guy or person or whatever comes to drop off your pizza, you know, they're trying to look for your address. They didn't really have a good answer to that when we brought that up to them, but something that we did require them to put into the pattern book was that there are building codes and fire codes that dictate the size of the numbers that have to be on, that are on the houses. So, and we've had our codes director, she's been involved in this process as well, so we've made them aware of the fact that, you know, this is something that they're going to be paying a lot more attention to, you know, since there're not going to be mailboxes out front anymore, they're going to have to rely on the numbers on the house to make sure that they're visible.
Why don't we call the developer up and go through the concept plan, I guess, is, here you go.
Commissioner Rob Oltsch, SEC, tonight, you're here tonight, and Mr. Dan Bobo with Old South this year, along with Mr. Matt Taylor from SEC as well on that side. I guess I can kind of go through some of the questions you guys have already had at this point in time, kind of lay a little extra out there for you. In regards to the ponds themselves on that side, we're looking at them being pretty much a detention pond with a small micro pool in it, so as Mike alluded to, there's a couple of different options. But right now, at the early stages of this, at the concept level side, we're anticipating those be traditional detention areas with a smaller micro pool in there that'll handle water for a period of time, just so we can dilute, take dilution out of the water as it goes to the system.
So a micro pool, does that mean that water stands?
Yes, for a longer period of time, yeah.
Smaller area, yes.
It wouldn't be the entire, the entire blue shaded area on there, depending on how the, how much water volume's coming to that space, there'll be a smaller, deeper pool that's part of that flatter detention area on that side, but much smaller than the actual whole size of that, what you see up there. And like I said, they'll go through the whole engineering design process that Mike evaluated when we submit construction plans if the project moves forward.
The only reason that I ask that is because I'm thinking about future phone calls from neighbors saying, there's standing water in my backyard, there's, you know, mosquitoes, that kind of thing. You're battling nature either way, you know, I understand, but so that's just the reason that I'm thinking, they're not going to realize it was designed that way on purpose and it has a job to do, but an unintended consequence is going to be, there's going to be standing water in their backyard.
Correct. And, you know, this is, this is a common practice that engineers use in this, probably. I think one of the best examples is, you know, from a standpoint of visibility for a micro pool kind of context, have you ever seen Sheffield Park on Veterans Parkway? I mean, they've got a lot of good vegetation up along the actual roadways, but those homes back up to that detention facility, and that has a micro pool in it as well on that side. So depending how much rain you get in a short period of time, depends on how much longer that little pond's going to stay wet, but the majority of that water does, you know, siphon off and leave just a little pool. From the mail kiosk standpoint, I think we've proposed at least one location right now in regards to, you know, handling the entire 200 homes on that side. We've adequately sized based on some of the parameters we've read through in the manual from the US Postal Service in regards to how large these kiosk areas are in regards to a certain number of homes. So the size that you see in the example up there right now is pretty much appropriate in regards to the amount of boxes that we'll need to handle from the 200 homes, based on US Postal Service standards on that side. So that rectangular shape on there is pretty close to actually how big that box cluster will be for the entire 200 homes on that side. So that's why we kind of, we wanted to really, really want to focus on making it as part of the original phase, so this is in Phase 1. We had a little pocket of open space there, going back to that larger open space that we were courting off solely for the premise, premise of using it for the mail kiosks, so that when you get it built up for the first phase, the subsequent four phases, there are three or four phases that would come after it, would already be there and in the ground, so we would simply, you know, simply building up the neighborhood behind it, and the mail kiosk is already there and established for use in the future on that side. I think we talked about the connectivity standpoint, and I think, you know, Mike and Doug, I know they're, and they have the Section 3, Phase 2 documents from the Davenport Development Team on that side in regards to their construction plans, so I think that's what made them feel more comfortable in regards to the connectivity. So that will get us at least a connection point back through Davenport Station to the initial entry-exit point that's in Davenport, which was part of their phase, their first section of development, which will give them a, will give median cut, not only for Davenport, but for the development from Woodruff itself, for residents in that first phase or so, to get out to 231 and make a left-hand turn through the existing median cut there until such time that as Doug and Mike, as the next section will hopefully be the Section 3, Phase 4, Phase 3 section, which will be the next phase, which will be the portion that connects to Rucker Road and providing the light. So, I mean, that's really going to be dictated by staff directing the Davenport developer based on the recommendations of the traffic impact study for Davenport, to push to make sure that the next section goes in, allows us and Davenport to have that dedicated lighted intersection.
Have you guys explored at all the question about emergency services and how they're going to be able to identify these homes?
I think most developers now, since we're going back to a mailbox not being in front of your house kind of standpoint, you're going to see a lot of developers, including, you know, this development, putting the addresses back on the fronts of the homes. So whether it be a decorative lettering, you know, that's a cohesive lettering pattern that goes throughout the neighborhood, or just something that's in tune with the architectural style of that house, by putting at least an address, and like Doug said, it'll be based on a codes parameter, is how big and how large that is to be put on the home, so that, you know, if there, you know, in a lot of cases, a lot of people's mailboxes, when they do put the addresses on there, like little stickers, like I know I have a mine, as the sunshine and weather wears those off, it disappears. Fortunately, my, my development, they actually put a brick address into my actual brick of my house, so it's actually there all the time, but I think based on these new parameters, you're going to see all these, all these developers and builders having to go back to the old-school system of actually putting numbers on the homes, because you're not going to have a mailbox to address to on that side.
Yeah, I think as you guys do future PUDs, especially, and we have pattern books, I think that may be one of the pieces you want to show, is how are you going to show us the addresses? We're giving a lot of grace right now, because it's still so new to all of us, and we're all trying to figure it out together, so I wouldn't ask you for that today, but as you go forward, I mean, you've got time to think about it. I think that's something I'd like to see in the pattern books.
That's fine, that's, yeah, I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good piece for everybody to understand how this is going to be dealt with. Any other questions that I haven't answered so far, or any other ones you thought of?
Thank you. Ready for our public hearing? This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item 18-8019, Dan Bobo for Old South Properties. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Number two, say.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 18-8019 for Old South Properties. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Staff reports or other business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. One of them, we've already made several allusions to tonight, is regarding the cluster box unit regulations, the proposed draft that I placed on your tables today. I'd like some more discussion about this, you know, and as well as the good discussion we had tonight, I'd like to have some more detailed discussions at our day meeting coming up, so we'll have a separate area, kind of like a work session, if you will, after we get through our Plats and Plans. There'll be other associated amendments with this, as far as things that might have changed in the zoning ordinance. We can go into more detail with that at the next meeting, but we won't get into that yet, because I want to make sure I know what we're going forward with before saying what other amendments have to be made. So kind of what I anticipate happening is if we have a good direction after our next meeting, possibly setting us for public hearing in November, so that's kind of how I'd like to see this go forward. But we'll just kind of see where the meeting goes in two weeks. The other, speaking of our meeting, in the planning mezzanine in two weeks, on the 22nd, I believe, Josh McCrary is going to be giving us a training session. We've already talked about some ideas. I ran across some information at our last planning conference that I was at. Every planning commissioner in a regional planning agency, as we are, has to have at least one hour of private property rights training per year, is one of the hours that you have. So Josh and I have already batted some ideas around. I gave him some, some ideas regarding grandfathering. There've been some questions recently about the grandfathering clause and how that works, and some, some other issues as well, so we'll kind of shore that up, and that'll be at 7:30, prior to our regular meeting at 9:00. So if you are able to make that, I hope that you do, we'll have some refreshments there as well, but most of the other training hours that you can get can be on any topic whatsoever, but you are specifically required to have one hour on this topic, private property rights, based on the state law. So hopefully you are able to, to attend that. So with that, those are the two main issues I had. Mike, did you have anything specific? Okay.
Doug mentioned our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October the 22nd, 9:00 AM, in the Planning Mez. And preceding that meeting will be a training session on personal property rights led by Josh McCrary. And if there are some things that pop into your mind that maybe Josh could prepare for before we got to the meeting, give him a call or Doug a call, and maybe we can prepare better for that training or open discussion session, okay? Anything else? Thank you for your patience, your participation. We are adjourned.